Member Collier.
Here.
Councilmember Cernovich.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here. I'd like everyone to please join me now for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence in honor of our troops. Consent items include minutes from the closed session in the council meeting on April 28, 2025, payroll for the pay period ending May 13 in the amount of $271,296.54, and stat reports. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda items? So moved.
Second.
Please, Paula Roan.
Councilmember Collier.
Aye.
Councilmember Cernovich.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Koenig.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye.
Next, we have approval of the bills for May 13 in the amount of $515,015.80. Do we have a motion to approve payment of the bills?
Hold on, a second.
And any discussion?
I did have a question. We spent $8,420.20 at Galesburg Builder Supply. Where did we get there? And were these things that were not anything that we can source locally? G A L O five, I don't know who's.
G A L O five?
Those things.
That's.
Fifteen dash forty-one, sorry.
Cemetery?
Hi, Courtney.
That's where we buy all the.
I can't hear you.
Oh, motor fuel.
Yeah, it's motor fuel tax. We get cold mix from them.
Okay. Okay. And we, none of that could be sourced locally, Gary?
No, that comes from Home Depot usually. We don't have a local supplier of.
I didn't know if Menards or anybody, if, I mean, if Home Depot could get it, you know, if we ever talked to them to try and get it within their tax bracket. Not tax bracket, sorry, taxable. Pauline.
I had a question on Robert's Tree Service. Is that a local company? I had, somebody asked me, and I did not really answer that.
It's not one that I'm aware of on that expenditure either, but.
I was wondering if they were local and if not, how we acquired them?
Two entries, one for twenty-five hundred and one for six hundred. One for tree removal, one for tree trimming. Sorry, I would just.
No, that's okay. Yeah, he's local. That's something that Chris Robinson just turned into me. So we usually go between him or Lamco for any, like, tree trimming or trees that we need to get cut down. They were formerly Soldier Services.
Oh, okay. I am familiar with that company.
They are local.
Okay.
Don't leave yet. And also we had numerous charges at Menards, which is fine, I'm not questioning those charges, but who's filing for the rebates on those?
I put the rebates in and then they go to.
But we, they are turning them into.
Yep, they go to the Public Works Department for those.
All right. Just want to make sure that we're providing the money so we get the rebates.
Yep.
Anything else?
Now she's already walking back.
All right, please, Paula Roan.
Councilmember Cernovich.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Koenig.
Aye.
Councilmember Collier.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye. We're going to move on to public comments. If there's anyone who wishes to address the council regarding anything not on the agenda, please step up with a microphone, state your name, and please keep in mind that there's a three-minute time limit per speaker. And when you do approach microphone, please give your name and speak loudly so that residents at home are able to hear what you have to say. If you wish to address the council, anything that is not on the agenda, please do so now. How are you, Joel?
Good evening, council. The day after the last council meeting, I wasn't able to make the council meeting. I was going to bring this up.
For people at home, can you state your name, please?
Joel Hossi. I sent an email concerning damage to the, basically the area by the ditch from the cleanup from last fall's or last summer's tornado. We had a lot of tree damage on my block. And I'm a little, was a little bit miffed in fact that I sent that email. Adam, I'll give you a pass on this because your email wasn't on the city website at the moment, at that moment, but everybody else on the council, as well as city manager and the mayor, you were on that email. I never got, not even any response, not even the, what I would call a blow-off response to that. So I'm a little bit ticked off, especially because my son destroyed a lawnmower on one of the culvert pipes that was damaged. So I'm now on a lawnmower. But the fact is, is that if anybody else did any work in the parking strip, I call it, between the sidewalk and the street, and the utility company, the city, anybody, they would have to grade it off, reseed it, and everything like that. I've got chunks of the soil is gone, so it's bumpier than snot. It's got culvert pipes are crushed, banged up, twisted, ripped, you name it, from the claw that they used to pick up this debris. And, and then part of the ditch, which was fixed ten years ago to allow for better drainage so that the street wasn't a mess, is now compromised because all this is messed up. So if, I think you guys had IDOT doing that cleanup later, right before they repaved the street. Who's responsible for cleaning this up or fixing it? I mean, I was out on a, on a day out there trying to clean out the culvert pipes so at least the water would flow. Somebody should be responsible for that that messed it up. I don't know, is there, is there any way to, for any remediation to this damage?
I apologize for, for a lack of response on my part, and we'll get it taken care of.
Do you have a timeframe for him? You out there to check it out?
We'll be out there this week.
I do have copies. I was going to give a copy to Adam since he wasn't part of that email, so at least he can see what I'm planning about.
But we'll be out there this week to, to assess it, and I'll be in communication with Joel.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Anybody else who wishes to address the council at this time?
How are you guys doing? I should be, so this is just a real quick, small thing. I was actually at the car wash on Tenny. I can't think of the name of it off the hand. Oh, Obra Luminshine, for those who don't know, sorry for not introducing. And as I was pulling out of the car wash, I noticed that water, soap, chemicals and all that stuff was coming out of the bay, kind of making its way around the corner and then out towards like the houses that are behind it. And then, I'm not sure, because it was making the corner. I didn't really stop long enough to investigate or see where it was going. It was just something that my wife and I saw that we kind of thought like, oh, I'm not sure if that's correct or not. And since we were here and it was time, I just figured, I didn't know if the city was aware of that or if, you know, if that was an issue.
What car wash did you say you were?
I can't think of the name offhand, it's the one on Tenny. Is it Laser Wash?
Laser Wash.
Laser Wash, I think is the name. So it just seemed like, I mean, it wasn't a little bit, you know, it was a good amount that was coming out of the car wash and like moving towards residences and stuff like that, so.
I know when I, if my car washed there, I don't, I guess it really knows that, paid that too much. I know it runs off, water run off that in the alleyway, but.
Well, my right hand side as I was pulling out.
Yeah, I didn't know it was inside the resident area.
I still know there was somebody to the city that like takes a look at that type of thing and make sure that, like, stuff like that's in compliance or just whatever, but.
Yeah, I, I know exactly what you're talking about. I don't know the ins and outs of the parts, you know, take care of it, because the edge of the bay is sloped a little towards the alley, so it all kind of run off from the cars and stuff runs into there and such, yeah.
I just wasn't sure if there was even like a permissible amount of runoff from that type of a thing. Because of chemicals and what have you.
Yeah, I can't speak intelligently to that issue either, but definitely something we can check into.
Well, I'm assuming everybody's time, take a guess.
Before you go, so the car washes that we do have, the water that's run off of them and goes into their own drain, where does that water go?
It should be treated at the wastewater treatment plant. It should be treated as stormwater. Is that correct, Scott?
It runs into, it runs into the city's waterways? They like, they don't collect their own water?
My understanding is it should not be into the stormwater.
By regulation, it should be going to.
Like.
The wastewater treatment plant and then discharged from the wastewater treatment plant. It should be treated because it's got soap and chemicals and stuff in it, so it shouldn't just drain to a creek.
Yeah, it shouldn't be kind of moving. That's just, that's what I wasn't sure about where, where the water, because like I said, the water was coming out of the bay and it seemed like it was just kind of going where it was going. And so I was like, oh, I don't know where you're going. I'm not sure if that's, if you're correct, but, you know, that kind of a thing. But, right on. Thank you, guys.
So what's the plan of action on that?
Yeah, so I was just going to say, are we going to look into it? What are we?
I was going to say that I will talk to our attorney about it because they should be, they should get a letter from him, letting him know if the, the situation has been brought to our attention and their requirement to keep that and have it treated.
And Zach, when do you think we can get that letter sent off? And then can we know when that's sent off too, so that? Thank you.
The emails was to address the council. Right along to a new business. We are going to open with the presentation from CMT, Raptellis Water Rates, Frim Water Rates.
My name is Scott Disflener. I'm with Crawford Murphy Utility. I'm thankful for the opportunity to be here to present additional detail and add on the water system, that which involves the water rates and the project plan. So as discussed in our presentation in January, we reviewed your water system and identified some needs that are out there within that system that the city should consider addressing and starting to work towards a asset management approach to your, your system, which is really preventative maintenance and working to repair them before they actually completely fail. So some of these are in line with that, and some of them are regulatory driven. Like, the first one is the high chloride concentrations in the existing well water, which is causing violations at your water treatment plant. Your existing wells now are, are aging. Well number one, three and four have both, or all three have been inspected and show deterioration and even holes in the casing pipes. So they are aging and are going to be in need of replacement as the years come. Your water treatment facilities were constructed in 2004, so they're reaching that 20-year level where you start to see additional failures in mechanical and electrical equipment that will need to be replaced.
When we go back, when you said wells one and three are aging and they're going to need to be replaced, are you talking about re-drilling a whole well or what do you mean by replaced?
So wells one and three have had a bunch of maintenance done to them over the years. They both are currently, they have new pumps and electrical gear in them now, so you've spent to renew them for the coming years. What we're seeing is a deterioration of the casing pipe because of the age, which is the part that seals off the upper watershed and keeps the surface water net out of it. And as those age, we're able to line those or put sleeves on them up until the point where we can't get the equipment down that pipe, the size of the equipment that we need. So these two wells are getting to that age where you're going to have to think about replacing them. Is that this year, the next five years? No, it's a farther out kind of look going forward, especially with the proposal for the two shallower wells with the high chloride. That's going to lower some of the demand on those wells too. So if all that works out, you could even look at resizing some of those at that time, trying to extend their life, but we really wanted to highlight their age and that you guys need to keep them in mind as you work forward and plan with things. Okay?
Yep.
The water treatment facilities, like I said, were, were built in 2004, and this is around the time that you'll start seeing maybe some increased maintenance, some increased failures in those mechanical equipments. You have replaced the RO membranes once already, and you're due to have them done again, so we had included those in a project. Your water distribution system, there's actually currently 13 miles of water main that's exceeded its, its anticipated 100-year life expectancy. And you can kind of see the chart on the, the right that you've got another 13 miles that are in that 1920 to 1940 range that are getting up there too. And then, of course, the, the lead and galvanized service line replacement that's being required by the I E P A for the lead service lines. So as we look at these needs, we pair them up with your current financial status. This is the part that was done by Raptellis, and I'm kind of presenting on their behalf tonight. So the city of Kewaunee currently serves around 5,000 customers. I think the number of service lines you have is just over 5,400 actually, so right in that range. Your revenue is about 2.4 million. You've got an operating expenses around 1.9 million. A debt service that's out there around 280,000. That leaves around 300,000 for capital improvements or replacements, things that come up right now. So that money's used up for, you know, repairs, replacements, water main replacements that come up, emergency repairs and that. So currently, the utility is breaking even. So in January, Raptellis brought forward two options that were discussed in that, and really those options were centered around increasing the rate funded capital, which is the capital that you're able to pay for from the rates themselves, to 500,000 in 2026, 600,000 in 2027, and then gradually increasing to 700,000 in 2030. It would also pay the debt service for the loan payment for the source water improvement project that we discussed, which is the shallow wells and membrane replacement, those are the two big ones. And that payment is actually anticipated to be 324,000. So those are large projects and large infrastructure plans there, but we've also planned for inflation. We know prices are going up, so there's a 4% inflation on operating costs because you've seen considerable inflation on chemicals and just construction materials, water main and things like that.
So the 324,000, that was the debt service for loan payment for the source water?
Yes.
Annually, for how many years? What's the amortization?
It is 20 years.
20.
20 years. And that is an I E P A S R F funded project. So, you know, just for your information, current values is about 1.84% for an interest rate.
That's how it's modeled?
That's how it's modeled, yes. And, you know, that project wouldn't, or that payment wouldn't begin until 2027, just with the way they're loan funding and your application status and that all works out, that it.
Is there any risk to that application?
There is. There, it is a competitive application. There's only so much money out there. However, you guys have a really good reason for it with your violation notices, the chloride issue, along with your median household income being below state and your other needs that you have here. So we would expect that you would score well, your violation notice would push you up, and I, I don't see a reason why they wouldn't have the loan money available for you. And even with a, a chance for some principal forgiveness possibly as that comes through.
So if we don't get that, we're looking at borrowing at market rates?
Yes.
Which would considerably increase our, our, our debt payment?
It would. And we've also planned a 3.5 inflation on construction material costs, and where that really comes in is we've estimated these projects based on 2025 dollars. When we start financing them out in '26, '27, we've marked that up for those. So when we talk about rate funded capital, we're really focusing around three areas, the first being the water main replacement program at around 250,000 dollars. This would, just so that you're familiar, this would be around 1,200 to 1,500 linear feet. So that's four to five blocks of water main a year. And that always depends on where the water main is, whether it's inside the pavement or outside the pavement, and stuff like that drives that cost.
Does this account for the road? If it is in the pavement, the basically replacing the road to the current condition that it's in, in that 250?
No. So in that 250, we would, the cost would plan to patch back the trench that would be there, not replace the whole road. Now, the trench itself, we would look to put back the pavement structure correctly. It wouldn't be, you know, just chip seal. It would be, you know, whatever the city's consultant decides their standard is for roadway going forward. We would make sure that that was covered. But one of the selection criteria is to marry it up with the pavement maintenance areas so that we're, we're, you know, getting in one area and doing it all at the same time. That allows you the best bang for your buck and also keeps you from having to come back and cut open new pavement.
Do we have a master plan for this particular area? I mean, like, where we're going to, I know we got.
No, we, we have, CMT has done the work for us on the, the water side and, and would make recommendations to us based on the, the water model that we have. The sewer work is to be contracted and the, the design work for the street portion is what you approved last month with, with Hutchinson Engineering.
Yeah.
And, and we will have the firms work together to make sure that we're coordinating all of those efforts so that we're not fixing a street and then replacing water or sewer, or fixing the water and sewer and then fixing.
So what takes precedence? Is it the sewer or is it the water that takes precedent on what gets done? Like, you know, if the water main in this area is deteriorating and, but the sewer, you know, is not at the top of the list, do we do the water main in that area, you know? And then just, of course, we're going to do the sewer, what takes precedent? Or is there a plan or is there like some sort of thing that we figure out that when we're doing it? Because like you said, I want to make sure that we can coordinate these things together so that way we're not looking at it from a standpoint of, oh, well, this sewer line's worse than this water main or whatever, and we're not getting the things in the right order done.
I think, I think we can prioritize the things based on a, a couple of different criteria. One, the, the water lines that are breaking or that have repeated leaks or that we're going to have to dig into a lot because they have all the lead lines, those are going to have to be done. But at the same time, if there's a street that needs to be done because it's a main high-traffic street, we can, we can prioritize that too. There's, you have some discretion in how you prioritize which projects, and that usually is, is done through a C I P process that we talked about, capital improvement planning, where you get to decide this, you know, you get to, to have some different, we have 13 miles worth of stuff. You'll, you'll have options of just on those older ones. We also have, as he said, the 1,600 lead lines. We have certain areas that we know are filled with lead lines, and some of those have higher priority than others because it's a daycare facility or an in-home daycare facility or people with certain needs, health needs. So the higher priority lead lines are going to get replaced before the lower priority lead lines. I don't know if that.
It, it, and I guess the last, the follow-up question, I'm sorry, is who is putting all these together? Is it CMT, is it Hutchinson, is it, you know, who is?
It's the, it's the city, it's city staff that has to ensure that the department, that the engineering firms work together, and then ultimately you get to decide in the prioritization of which projects go forward and which ones are kind of in an out-year status. Usually a C I P, you can, you look at five years, but you can have the, the first five years and then a, a kind of a rolling, what's the next five years? So that we look and see what we're doing over time.
So we can expect that to be part of the deliverable here? I mean, we're getting a high-level overview brief here, and then there will be a deliverable with prioritization of how your company would execute the replacement?
So that's not in our current project plan, and one of the reasons that it's not is with water mains, it's an underground asset. So we struggle to have eyes-on inspections and predict what your priorities are going to be in year two, three, and four. So the way we've set it up and worked with Gary on is that, you know, ensuring that you've got a water main replacement program and it is funded and that you have that 250,000 so that when you start the year, you go to your staff and you talk to them about where's their breaks at, what's their break history? We compare that to the year before. So every year you would come in, and with water mains, they've got to be permitted through the I E P A. So you'll have to have an engineer involved. And when you do that, we'll come in at the very beginning of that, we'll identify with your staff which ones we would recommend for this year. When we're doing that, we're going to be talking to Gary, and Hutchinson's going to weigh in on, on the roadway side, and we're going to look at marrying those together because it is a risk-based assessment of what can we wait on and what can't we wait on. And when we've gone through and laid out water mains that you should do it this year and this year and this year and.
It doesn't always fall.
It, it falls apart in one year because all of a sudden, that summer, a main that we were planning on waiting five years just starts to go. And it's, it's more about not having that in-ground data to back that up. So we're really having to, you know, but we're identifying the list, right, with what we've got up here based on pavement maintenance area, break history, leak care, and pipe data. So we're all marrying that up each year to see, figure out which ones have the highest scores that you would recommend that year.
But a C I P is always written on paper, not carved in stone, so you have a little bit of flexibility to move things around.
So I understand the plan that you want to, you know, you want to keep the, the potential change based on, you know, current issues, but I'm talking about a snapshot of our material condition, like two days. If we were kicking off today.
Do we know where we're starting?
Do we know where the highest probability of risk is so we can start at least planning? The best plans are those that are made and, and with the ability to change. But if we start every year re-looking at this, then I fear that we will be doing it in the fall, just like our roads programs have become, and we need to be able to kick off early to get these things done.
I asked, in, in a public works meeting yesterday, I asked them, which sewers would they say most need to be lined and which water lines are the most in need of repair? And kind of kicked off that conversation because that information really should lie in the, in the hands and the heads of the people who are superintendents for those divisions every day, and that's why they're going to be involved. Their input in knowing where we have leaks, where we have lead service lines that have our critical facilities, those, their, that information has to come from, from them because they're the ones that, that deal with it and have the, the best understanding of where those breaks are. They, they have an idea, it's, it's up there, leak history, pipe age, they have all that data. They have all that information at Public Works.
So in this.
In, in a repository that we can access or?
Or it is a combination of, of a repository and.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm concerned that we are hearing that we are not going to get a material condition assessment.
So you have in, in here, in this project and stuff that we have done in the past, you have mapping that shows age, material. you have mapping that shows age, material type. What we do not have and have not, you know, received from staff is break history or leak history or even just their impression of prioritization. And it sounds like Gary's starting that discussion with them. We encourage that, that you guys are tracking that and that you're, you're writing down where those at so that we can develop, you know, heat maps that show this is where you're spending all your time, that should be a prioritization. But currently, we don't have that data.
I, I guess I would like to see us consider as a council, planning 80% and leaving 20% for the emergent main that needs replaced. Because if we're gonna coordinate roads and sewers and water mains, we need to plan out-year to get to, to coordinate and to integrate those different contractors. If we try and wait until the beginning of the year to coordinate those contractors, we will fail.
We will be at the bottom of the list.
That's correct. So we need to plan for a certain percentage and decide as a group how we're gonna do that and save a, a margin for the emerging need. I'd like us to really consider that.
Yeah, I, I would wholeheartedly support that. The, the key piece of data that we don't have that, that Gary's working on getting is, is a big driver on it. And then also, I know you're just starting your pavement maintenance stuff, so it'll lag a little bit, but like you said, it'll all marry together. When you, when you have that, you can start seeing the two data sets and marrying it up.
As you pointed out, with most of it underground, we're gonna need to take a best guess. We might not know everything, but again, it should not prevent us from making a plan.
What timeframe do you need that data and that information that Public Works has as, that Gary's starting to ask questions for? What kind of timeframe would you need to get that in?
Um, well, this year, I assume...
Give me a realistic date, you know?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I guess what I was gonna start with was working back from when you would start using this data, which would be, you know, January 1st of next year. So, I mean, if we had that data in a, in a couple of months, we could turn it around in a couple of months with the prioritization, the ranking and, and showing, you know, what streets or what water mains are the highest risks and which ones you should have ranked at the top.
So we're sitting here in the middle of May, so let's just say by the end of July, if you had that information, would that be enough time, giving them two and a half months to get all that data written down, some way, shape, or form, put in information that we can send to you so that way you can map that data and find the hot points?
Absolutely.
Is that attainable, Gary, that by the end of July, that we could have that as a deadline?
I think it is.
Okay.
So the next replacement program really goes hand-in-hand with the, the water mains. Obviously, we're replacing valves when we replace the water main. What this is really focused on are those valves that are outside our immediate water main replacement areas. These are valves that are in those maintenance areas if we're, if we're not gonna replace that. Or they're critical valves for the flushing program so that they're able to complete the flushing in, in the way that's been laid out. And also critical valves for water main replacements or isolation of the system themselves that are, that are kind of outside of these water lines. So we've put 40,000 towards that in that programming. And that's anywhere between five and eight valves. And again, it depends on size, whether they're in the roadway or not, and how much isolation you have to do for those.
So is this 40,000 total or is this 40,000 annually?
Annually.
Okay. On top of the 250?
Yes.
So right now we're 290.
Yep.
Okay.
Assuming the five-day valves comes from our historical data of what our crews are doing?
Yep, yeah. And I know that when we completed our unidirectional flushing program, the guys were like, this is great, you know, we, we wanna work towards this, but we can show you on these maps that a bunch of valves of these don't work. And towards that, we wanted to make sure that we had some funds in there, that they're not waiting for water main replacements in those areas to be able to flush, to be able to get that water quality improved and get the sediment out of the system as, as your system goes. So to, to target those right away along with other areas. Because even being able to isolate sections, smaller sections for lead service line replacements is helpful too. And really, the, the last capital fund, funded, or the last rate-funded capital is the lead service line replacement program. We've put 200,000 in here. The selection criteria is established by your lead service line replacement program or plan. And really, it starts with high-risk areas, schools, preschools, daycares, in-home daycares, licensed or unlicensed. We wanna make sure we're getting all of those and then marrying it up with your pavement, your pavement maintenance areas and then anything that's leaking, low-income areas, and then followed up by all the others. The 200,000 is, is really a starting point and it really depends on if you're self-performing that with your staff, you, you know, that money goes a lot farther than if you've got a contractor coming in. You could take some of that money and marry it up with water main, the, the 250,000 there to do services on that, stretch those dollars a little bit. It's really, you know, the program aspect of it gives you that flexibility. And then the last one is, is the SRF project, the larger project, is a source water improvement project. We note that the two new wells at the south and north water treatment plant, the membrane replacement, repairs to the existing wellhouses one and three to strengthen those up and rehab those facilities. I know one was damaged and I think just recently had a roof repair on it. So just completing all those repairs, electrical improvements to support the wells, raw water main extensions from the wells. We've cited the preliminary wells on property and near the other wells so that we keep those raw water main extensions to a minimum. And also the corrosion control treatment at the water treatment plants themselves. These are projects that are in our project plan, which is what we're using to start the SRF loan process, our application process to them. It's a lengthy process that we've gotta go through. So we wanted to get it kicked off of what we've got here. I know Gary has mentioned a well at, at the Park District that they were a possibility for maybe replacing one of these new wells with an existing well. There'd still be costs there, but it would help lower those costs. We are, talked to Gary about those and we are looking into those options and certainly keeping things open as we work through the final design of these. But this is where we're at currently with the planning aspect of it.
How long would it, what would be the timeline? What would you schedule for these, like, kind of must-do items?
So once the, the core, the, the last project, the chloride project?
Yeah.
So really, we're going in, we've just submitted the project plan itself. It has to be approved by March 31st of 2026. So it shouldn't take that long, it should only be six months, but we're getting it in as early as we can till it were approved because you have to have project planning approved by March 31st of 2026. At March 31st of 2026, we'll submit the funding nomination form. That's when the IEPA gets all of their, their projects in that are looking for money. And they rank them all, score them all, and in July of 2026, they put out their list that says these are who, what projects we're funding and, and all the information that goes with that. As soon as you get that in July, you start the loan application process, which is a couple of months, and work through before you'll get your final loan commitment letter, which will likely be in late 2026. And you'll be going out to bid and starting construction in 2027. This project is a little bit unique in that we're able, we would be able to do the improvements at the wastewater plant or the water plant with the membrane replacement and that right up front. But the wells themselves will have to have a test well drilled first. We'll have to sample the water, check the, and that will tell us the actual yield and water quality and everything else. We've done all of our homework, but again, you never know until you drill a hole. And so we'll do the test well first, make sure everything's good. And if we have to do any, any changes with the contractor before they install the final stuff. So we'll have a test well, get all that approved, and there'll be a permitting process for the IEPA from the, from the test well to the final well, and then it'll all be installed. So it will probably take at least a year for those wells to be in. So you're looking at possibly the end of 2027 before that project is complete, beginning of 2028, before everything's online for those. And that's why, you know, when it comes to infrastructure projects like this, and especially when you factor in the SRF loan, we really recommend that you move forward with the project planning because the timeline is so drawn out to get these through and get the funding available.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that. So that's what I was gonna ask next is, is there anything that we need to make sure we are doing administratively or our crews on the water side to streamline and prepare?
So our next steps here, we'll get the project plan in and we'll start the design, the final design of this. And part of that final design, we're going to have to work through the corrosion control design of it.
Okay.
And what that involves is, you know, it's the Flint, Michigan thing where we're changing source water slightly from a deep source to a shallow source. So we're having to do a lot of steps and testing to check on the corrosivity of the water and how the water, the newer water will react with your pipes and the scale and those pipes and that. So going forward, we'll be bringing an engineering agreement to you guys that will include that corrosion control next steps.
Talking about anodic treatment or what do you, how are you...
Well, typically, it, it run, it really runs down to, to two options mainly, and that's pH adjustment, higher pH, it's a little less corrosive. Your pH is pretty high already. I don't think that's the way it will go, but it's, it's likely it'll be in a work of phosphate feed where you'll feed just a little bit of work of phosphate for that to begin that pipe. Unfortunately, we can't jump to the end and the IEPA won't accept that off the bat. We'll have to go through those steps. And one of the things that will, will need the city staff and that to help out with is we'll have to harvest some existing service lines, copper and lead in the system and send those to our consultants so they can analyze the scale and test all of those things.
So that's source water side. Obviously, we hear complaints on the supply side of the impact R O has on copper. Would any of those samples impact the analysis for the supply side?
Yes. So we are, as a part of the corrosion control study, we've included copper pitting study to see how your water is on the copper side, not just the lead side. Because we've heard that from your staff and others that there are a copper pitting issue. And R O water tends to be a little aggressive because of all of the minerals and everything that it pulls out. You guys blend by that to bring that back up, but we will be looking at that as a part of this study too and considering those.
Thanks.
Yep.
These are the questions for, sorry. Blaine?
I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to discussion item number two, water rates. There's been two, two suggestions here, option one and option two. Option one, there's a sizable increase in year one of 23% with 4% over the next four years for a total of 39% over the, over the five years. And then option two is a little less upfront with a 14% in the first year with 13% the second year and 5% for subsequent years. And overall, it would total a 42% increase over the five-year period. But, you know, these are their suggestions, what we need to accommodate, the, what we need to fix now. We, we can still, if you guys are interested, we can come up with our own figures.
So is this in addition to the potential loan that we would get through IEPA?
Yes.
1.0 million, this would be what's needed on top of that to actually...
This would be water rates to all our customers as well as ours.
Yeah.
So, I mean, these are their suggestions, you know, we don't have to go with their, with those suggestions. I say we can come up with our own numbers.
I mean, there's two options here. And I mean, when you look at the options, I mean, it's a drastic increase and then slow over time. And that option there, what is, what is the benefit to that option? Of course, it's obviously a lot of money upfront, but does that give us the money that we need to get a lot of things done that we're talking about with the wells and everything else, short-term while we're working through the water mains and, and all that? Or if we were to go option two, is that gonna limit the amount of work we can do upfront that is needed and take that timeframe and stretch it out of that amount of work? So I, I'm trying to get kind of some, some...
That's, that's a summary of how it works.
Thank you.
You get the money upfront and you can start doing more or you split it up and you need more over time because you've put some of the stuff off and you're not collecting the money as soon. So it takes longer to, to get the amount of money you need.
And I, I think, you know, from residents that I have talked to, when we had discussions on the possibility of privatization, which, you know, most, actually, every citizen that I talked to, you know, was dead-set against that idea and because they were concerned about the water rates. And with other communities that I talked to that actually had privatized water, most of those places, the water rates over a very quick period of time doubled. So the residents that I talked to, you know, they, they were okay with paying a little bit more for the water, they just did not want the privatization.
The other question I have is, does this take into consideration the new agreement that we designed at the BAC for an increase of $400,000 over the five years?
I would say that these numbers are based probably off of the old numbers with a little bit of an increase over time.
Yeah, it would have been the old numbers and then it has that 4% increase in it for the inflationary cost.
So this doesn't include the five-year agreement that we designed?
Which these numbers are not even relevant right now, I mean, due to what we approved.
Sorry to interrupt. Over at Bloomingdale's again. I think honestly, Mayor Moore, just wanted to piggyback you a little bit and say that for myself, being a citizen of Kiwanee and also thinking of the people that I've spoken with in regard to the water, I mean, obviously, when you talk about raising rates and things like that, people always kind of flinch. But one thing that the water privatization situation did do was kind of give people a come-to-Jesus moment, if you will, about the necessity of a rate increase. I mean, when you kind of get that thorough presentation that you just got, I think more people are aware, A, of the situation we're in and B, what it's gonna take to get out of it. The council and yourself have said multiple times, you know, about kicking the can down the road and things of that nature. So for my money, and I think I'm just speaking purely for myself here as a citizen, I would rather see you guys just take the plunge, do the 24% increase, or figure out what increase that you want, what is best, you know, in your estimation, and make that initial increase happen. Because I feel like over a five-year period with rates increasing, the average person's gonna wanna see something for that. And if, if rates are increasing 13%, then 14% in a 24-month period, which isn't that long of a period, and you're not really seeing any work because of the, the lack of funding off of the 13% increase initially, then I think that for the citizens and also for yourselves politically, it would, it would behoove everybody to wanna get that work done quick. And I think most people are apt to agree to a rate increase so long as they see like that work happen, whether it's starting with a well being dug or, or lines coming out. And I think I'm not saying anything that all of you guys don't already know. I was just kind of, you know, wanted to give you my perspective, my viewpoint as a citizen.
Appreciate it. So thank you. I mean, that's kind of falls in line with, with my opinion as well, you know, Will's. Yeah.
You ripped the Band-Aid off early, get it done. You ripped the Band-Aid off early, get it done, start showing work. And, and I think that could help minimize the amount of overall cost of this thing too, because there could be things that two, three years off the road that have deteriorated beyond.
Right.
The longer we put this off, the longer and the more it's gonna cost.
Absolutely, yes.
And option one here is the one that, that always keeps coming up, so that...
I think we all know that that's probably the best course of action here.
It's not gonna get cheaper year two, year three, year four.
I have a question for Scott. Considering the new agreement that we have with BAC, is that 23% in that initial year and the subsequent 4% thereafter, is that going to be enough?
I can't answer that without plugging those numbers in. I'm not even sure what those numbers are, but we could certainly plug them in and get you an answer in a day, for sure. I mean, it's, it's a quick addition to, to their spreadsheet and have Raftalus look at it real quick.
Yeah, I think that would be appreciated.
And I'm not sure that it would affect maybe your 2020, or your, your initial rate increase of that 23, but it may mess with that 4% increase on the out years as that, that contract increases.
Yeah, I wanna make sure we do it right.
Yeah, I would like to see those numbers with that, you know, considered.
Yeah, we'll, we'll request that of Raftalus. Gary can send me the, the numbers in the morning and get that turned around for you.
And then we can revisit this at the next meeting. After we have those figures.
Sir.
Anything else? Right along to item C, Bill number 25-42, resolution expressing the intent of the city council regarding a demolition lien on 601 O'Day Street in the city of Cleveland. Do I have a motion? So moved. Before I would vote in favor of removing this lien, I do have a couple of questions. You know, first, you know, we asked our city attorney to file the liens, were these liens covered under your initial retainer fee or did we get charged additional attorney fees for this service?
They are under our original retainer. You're not charged additional fees for that, no.
And then second, you know, we were charged $164 by the sheriff's department and for recording fees. Were these fees covered under the grant proposal or are these an addition that we
Those, those fees were not submitted to Idaho for grants.
No, that's money that came, so we paid that out of our, our budget.
Yes.
So my opinion, thank you Keith, with my opinion, I would consider waiving those liens, but with the caveat that we recoup those fees.
Quick question, sorry, quick question. The, the work you did, was there an extra charge for the recording of the lien?
Yes, there is a charge for recording of the lien.
Just making sure on that one.
Not for the preparation of the lien.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it was $82, $82 for the sheriff's department, $82 for recording of the lien.
Yeah, and then there's another 82 to release the lien.
Okay, so then we're looking at over $200. I, I, you know, the money is actually coming out of our budget. I would like to see us, at the very least, recoup that. I understand that, you know, the actual demolition work was paid for through the, the grant money, so it didn't technically come out of city coffers, but, you know, some, some money did, and I would like to recoup that for...
I beg to differ to a bit. The $34,000 that we paid for this set up a situation where you all approved $7,000 additionally to come out of our budget to demolish a house two, two weeks ago or four weeks ago. So this initial decision didn't result in a whole, a whole lot coming out of our coffers because it was grant money, but that grant money's coming from the state, which is still our tax dollars. And then it set up a situation where we did take money out of our general fund to demolish another house. I personally would like to hear an analysis of alternatives here. Like, I, I'm okay with the concept of relieving a lien so another person can invest in this property and continue moving our city forward. However, the original owner that set this process in action owns this home, owns this property, and is there a possibility legally to leave the lien on there and at closing, the proceeds of the sale go towards the lien? And then we discuss an intent to relieve the remaining, the remainder of, remainder of the lien?
Ultimately, what you're facing primarily is an issue where the original property owners do not have the means by way of income or otherwise. In fact, they're not even Illinois residents anymore for what that is. And in fact, one of them, I believe actually is suffering from dementia at this point or, or some other neurodegenerative situation for that. Now, as far as the proceeds of the sale being applied to a lien on that, obviously, the lien has to be removed in order for clear title to exist to be able to sell the property in the first place. So you wouldn't be able to assess that against the proceeds necessarily for how that goes to get you to where you're wanting to get to, I don't think. There's not gonna be enough in this deal, given the state of the property also, for, when they're getting this as a vacant lot, the value's just not there.
It's not a value to, I, I guess what, and I agree with Adam here is that, you know, we're willing to take $200, $300, you know, out of $34,164. And they, the sale of the lot may not generate $34,000 in income, but the fact is that it is gonna generate something and these people are gonna get that money. And we have a lien on the property, we're gonna get what, 200 bucks? Why, why even go for 200 bucks at that point? You know, it's mute, it's mooted. The proceeds of this sale should go to pay for whatever and then we get rid of the rest of it, you know, the lien that way. I, I just, I have a hard time then making money and we're stuck $34,000 in hold.
There's just no...
Whether it's $1,500, $2,000 or whatever, that should be paid to the city of Kewaunee to clear up anything and then we, you know, vacate the rest of the lien, whatever. I, I don't know the legal terms or whatever that, but we should not be stuck with the bag on this one and these owners get to take a check home for the sale of their property.
The argument is that by the time closing costs have occurred and the rest of the deal's taken, they're not going to clear anything with respect to this property by the, by the end of the day, for no more than what this lot's ultimately worth at this point.
Just, just add a little bit of other information to it as well. The current owners, as Zach said, are no longer in Illinois, so no one's gonna mow this lot, which means the city's gonna mow it, probably every two to three weeks, so all throughout summer, until something happens to it. Just something else to keep in mind.
Which would be more liens on the property.
Which would be more liens on the property and just keep staring at it. What is, what are they selling the lot for or what are they buying it for?
I don't have that in front of me at the moment. It's not a large amount by any stretch. Now, the other thing I will point out, you can't always find a buyer in a situation like this. And here we've actually got someone interested in acquiring this lot. A lot of times when you have properties that are knocked down like this, these lots can sit around for quite a while, you don't even have anybody interested in acquiring it to put the time and the energy in to maintain it, to figure out what the next steps are, to use it for the community in any way, shape or form, and it just sits there fallow for however long that happens to be. This, at least, there's a situation where somebody's interested in it, which we don't always see.
And the person, the party that's interested has a track record of keeping their properties in very, very good condition.
Can you explain then, what's the purpose of filing these liens? I mean, how are we ever going to recoup our investment in these? I, I, I mean, just I know...
Whether there's grants or money, there's still money being put towards these.
Sure.
And if we don't put it on that house, we're gonna tear down another house.
Yeah.
You know, and, and I agree, like, how do we ever recoup any of that or is, what's the point of a lien? Then we might as well just not even spend the money to file them.
A good chunk of the time, those liens are used to get someone's attention to deal with the underlying problem, and a good chunk of the time that does work. The other thing that that allows us to do, if there has been a longstanding problem, as there have been on multiple occasions within our city, there are properties that have been problems for decades. Those liens allow us to eventually foreclose on that lien, force the demolition of the issue, and eventually finally resolve the problem. Yes, you're probably still writing a check to fix the problem at the end of the day, but it gives you the legal ability to correct the problem. So you're not sitting there with a blighted house and no other recourse in dealing with it.
Do we have any legal recourse to take over the property? I mean, we don't wanna be owning all these vacant lots. I get it, but owning them and reselling them and making money off them, whether it's 20 bucks or $1,000 after closing costs, I mean, I don't...
Let me ask one more situation, real estate-wise. A short sale must be approved by a lender, even though the owner is actually selling the home, the mortgage holder has to approve of the sale. So in this situation, is there a way we could, you know, put in this that we would waive this lien if the city of Kewaunee is a benefactor of the proceeds? So it's allowed to be cleared, but we get a portion of the sale price?
It's too low of an amount of money for that to get you anywhere. If this was a higher value property or a higher value situation, I can see where you're going with that, but also, it's not like we could have even pushed for some kind of interest out of their estate. They have nothing, from what I can tell here. So there's nothing to get. You cannot get blood out of a rock. And that's where we're at with this particular property and this particular set of owners.
Sure. Again, like Chris is saying, and I'm agreeing, it is far less about the dollar amount and more about the property owner walking away with a check that's more than $0.
But on the other hand, if it stays the way it is, then the property owner just has us taking care of their lot.
That's true, and so I'm willing to concede.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, it's which, which do you want? Because that's your, that's your two options. Either we continue to take care of it indefinitely, or we go this way and we lose. So we lose here or we lose here?
We actually had that situation happen before. Somebody had requested that we waive liens for a property that they were gonna purchase and we kind of asked the same thing, like if the seller was gonna get anything out of it, then they needed to basically hand over that money. And so that was presented to them and both the buyer and seller walked away. And then eventually the property goes up for tax sale and the buyer can get it for cheap then and not have to worry about the liens because we have to, we're supposed to strike.
So which case do you wanna lose on, I guess, this way? It comes down to...
And I get what you're saying.
I mean, at the end of the day, it's exhausting our resources to figure out. I mean, that's, that's why we're here, to talk about this and, and make sure that we're making the right decision, you know, so we're fiscally responsible with taxpayer dollars.
We do file a lot of liens that end up getting removed, so that's something for you guys to think about too, if you want us to do that process.
What we do moving forward is a different discussion.
Number seven.
So what do you wanna do on this one?
Happy to remove it. I mean, the, the analysis talk was functional enough.
Have any interest in recouping our fees if we can do that?
Yes, I think it's something, better than nothing.
It's the principle.
You have a possibility, Zach, that we can recover our fees.
I think we can find a way to try to put it into the closing, although we need to make sure that the buyer is accepting of that fact as part of this, is that that's going to be going into the balancing of those figures.
Okay. And then the releasing of the lien is, you're gonna put that figure in there too, Zach?
Yeah, I'm just, the more we put in there, the more that's a basis for them to have to take issue with, but yes, we can.
So we can put in the, the sheriff's notification and the recording and release of the lien, start there and see if we can, that works, and if not, negotiate now. We'll update that.
We have a motion on the table with a second.
Do we gotta?
Need to rescind that, add the stipulation?
I think we understand that the executed version of the resolution will say to reclaim, to recoup our fees to the maximum extent possible.
Yep.
Because it currently says as directed.
Exactly.
So you've directed as such.
So we can have a vote?
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic.
Aye.
Councilmember Coliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Sernovich.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye. Item D, resolution expressing, expressing the intent of the city council regarding the use of tax increment financing for the Flemish Club. Do I have a motion?
Second.
End discussion. I, you know, I believe we have some guidelines, you know, that we need to determine, you know, which ones may or may not apply, like, you know, like given this money, does it preserve or enhance the existing, you know, property tax base?
I think what we need to look at and maybe we start realigning our precedent with the TIF and what it's actually gonna be used for and, and kind of have that consideration of where we're gonna draw that line going forward, because we haven't in the past and it's benefited the community and there's other resources that are available to some of these businesses. And, you know, replacing roofs doesn't increase the incremental tax value of that building or that business, and it doesn't assess more TIF money going in, so we're taking money out of that account and we're not necessarily getting any extra gain in it. And we should not be in the business of replacing everybody's roof and not having anything for it, and we have other systems in place. Now that being said, we have set a precedent of certain things, not drawing the line potentially here, but going forward.
Well, we've always said we would do it case by case.
Hundred percent case by case, but, you know, everybody's coming to us with their roofs lately.
I am going on record that I do not, I want to get away from case by case. I would like to see us set a more rigorous standard for TIF and set a goal for the TIF, which I believe the downtown TIF, given its name, was intended to revitalize the downtown area. And the evaluations that I look at, at the buildings down there are not increasing. And we are at serious risk of 11 years from now, when this TIF expires, having gone through 23 years of depriving the park district, the school district and other taxing bodies of revenues they were due without anything real to show for it.
I don't, I don't disagree. I mean, I think we have used this money for things that aren't what the intent is for in the past. And we have other things that we put in place that could be something that these businesses could come to us, hundred percent.
So we can't change the past?
Not at all.
Well, we have this one in front of us.
So this is from, this is from the Illinois Municipal League on TIFs, and in the types of eligible project costs, maintenance is not anywhere on here. And so maintenance generally is not considered an eligible project cost. We're looking to expand our tax base, to grow the valuation, to attract new investment and not just subsidize current existing businesses. So that's, that's really what we wanna see is not just, not just the downtown bring new businesses, but we wanna see the valuation increase, because the whole goal is to have that increment where our, our public investments are bringing in the private side to make sure that in 23 years, we have an EAV greater than we would have otherwise had, had we not had a TIF. So this, in my mind, I, I wanna be clear, the, the Flemish Club is an exceptional organization, and I value their existence, I value their presence, what they do for the community. If given the opportunity, I might contribute to their roof fund, but this particular money, in my mind, is not going to provide the return on investment for the community that this money is intended to, to have.
I, I guess I would have a question that I've... I guess I would have a question that I've represented from the Flemish would have to answer. Was this your first, you know, try at getting money for the roof? Or have you sought other avenues to finance this roof work? Sorry, Mark.
It's all right.
Moved it when I saw you coming in.
Mark McInnes, Kiwanee, Representative Flemish Marine Club. Yeah, I mean, you've seen our breakfast, our things. I said, we're, you know, I wanted to get the point, I think I sent you guys a note that we're not an exempt organization on taxes. We pay, you know, the same as any other business on Second Street, Third Street, our assessed valuation is the same. We pay the same amount of taxes and everything. We don't have owners, we don't have stockholders, so our money has to stay there and stuff like that. But for that most part, but I mean, for us to try to, how do I say it? You know, given year, I would estimate we probably give away half of those Saturday nights, Friday nights, when you see the cars there. We're not getting that money, but the toilets are still flushing. We're sending money over to the city. Amarin is still charging us for air conditioning, everything else. And if we, you know, we don't waive a fee for your Humane Society fundraiser. We look like the dogs all of a sudden. So, yeah, that's usually where our rentals go to, back into our building and stuff like that. Because the other stuff that we do for, you know, you know, yeah, we have a bar, that gets that, we have machines, but that just helps pay our insurance and our fees for liquor licenses and that. But you can't do it on, you know, $8 breakfast on, once a month on a Sunday. It's tough to put a roof on. I mean, you guys see, these roofs are, you know, those estimates are not cheap. And that's just on the smallest section of our roof, you know, the original section from 1940s. So, you know, and then our other option is, we got to play bad guy, raise our rates and raise our revenues. And, you know, now we look, you know, we don't look very good for the community either. And we open it up for everybody, I mean, you name it. We've had a fundraiser or a social or thing and, you know, weddings and that, yeah, we have weddings, we get paid for those. But when it comes to the other events, we're constantly, I'm afraid, look at the number of what it would be, what we waive in a given year, so.
All due respect, Mark, we just had a discussion and none of us wanted to have as far as raising water rates, but sometimes it becomes necessary.
Yeah, well, I know what you mean, and we're going to have to do the same thing. Because that water rate you discussed.
Sometimes you got to look bad.
It's going to affect us down there on Saturday nights when we got, you know, 12 toilets that are getting flushed at a wedding reception or an event, and it's, you know, water coming in, sewer going out. It's, we're going to get affected just the same way, you know? So that water rate is going to affect us the same way, so.
I just, I apologize, but I just don't buy the argument that you don't want to look bad and raise rates.
Well, we don't, but you guys, I know.
None of us want to do that, but.
Well, we also don't want to close a building up because of a bad roof either. We're pretty much a volunteer group, you know? I mean, we have paid staff, sure, for events, but most of other stuff comes, you know, volunteers.
That still doesn't answer my, was this your first shot at getting the roof?
It's our first shot at coming here for the.
But have you, are there any other, have you researched any other alternatives that could possibly help you with that expense?
I mean, we don't qualify for my project now, roofs. We looked into that. Any other grants are not basically held there for us.
Yeah, that's why, if you checked any of that stuff, okay. That's what.
There's not a whole lot of nonprofit, you know, grants available for stuff like that. If we were a C3, a little different story. Or we consider a C7, which is a, you know, the C3 is the one that everybody thinks of that, that's your, when you're exempt.
Yeah.
You could get a little more bang for your buck there, stuff like that. We're not eligible for that. So the answer is kind of sort of, if that makes sense, you know?
Any questions for Mark Sixdown?
Yeah. Or Falls.
So if we were to give the, I get what you're saying. If we were to give kind of what our stipulation that we had done of 25 grand, I mean, we got 67,000, we have 71, we have 94, I thought the other one was, 95. Are you guys able to come up with the rest of the money if we get the roof?
Yeah, we feel we can. We've been saving up, we've been doing some things. We've got some pot money in there. We didn't get any settlement, the storm came through last year, it went. Kind of like, it hit, like we're goods as that, but didn't come toward us, we got denied anything on that. Oh, my train of thought here now. But yeah, we can do it if we get it. And those prices that you see there, they're not going to stay at that price. I've already been told that. But the prices of rubber and oil and everything like that, they're going to go up, so, and we're going to see probably injuries on that. And we are lucky, we were able to get them, those bids were local people around here that, you know, were willing, were wanting to do the work.
Any other questions for Mark? Thanks, Mark.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mark.
I would, I hope you do for the next, next application.
So we have a lot to consider here, gentlemen. Want to give them TIF money? Do, how much do we want to give them if we do? Pull them out, you want to give them partial?
I, Byron Broads.
What you guys just talked about, it doesn't fit the criteria.
It doesn't, but neither did Chad's last time. Neither has a parking lot, neither has the Johnson Theater Roost, neither has.
I understand that I voted on all those.
I did too. You know, and this is brought forth in front of us. And while I believe it doesn't fit the criteria, neither did those others. And we can't change the past, we can change the future, but I don't think, my own opinion is tonight is not the night to do it, but we set that standard going forward.
And that, and I agree. I would like to see us be a little more stringent on what we give money for.
This is not going to increase the value of that. We're not going to recoup the amount of money that we're going to give in this TIF over the next, when it expires. I mean, it's, but this is good for the community. It's good for, you know, everything they do.
I was just running through my head when Mark was up there talking about the different events that I go to, the recurring ones at the Flemish. I am not anti-Flemish.
And I don't think any of us are. I think, I think we set the precedent going forward, don't come to us with a roof. Don't come to us with things that don't qualify. You got a parking lot, you need this? Don't come, because we're not going to do it. And I think that's what we need to look at, because we only have a certain amount of time left in the TIF and a certain amount of money that we're going to recoup in it. And if we continue down this path, like Adam has said, we've got nothing to show for it.
And I, and I would like, you know, we consider this tonight, but moving forward, maybe set that up as a discussion item in upcoming council meetings as far as how we want to handle that.
No more case by case basis, a hundred percent. These are the regulations. These are what qualify for TIF. And if it doesn't fit in this box, don't bring it to us, because it's going to get denied.
But we still have this one on the table that we have to decide on tonight. Like I said, we can give them no money, we can give them the full amount, we can give them 25,000 that we've kind of generally done. We.
I mean, I, I'm for the 25,000 that we've generally done. You know, Mark can come up with the rest of it, he said. So I think that's what we've done in the past, that's what I've agreed to in the past. And so I think we do that for this one, one more time for.
Set up discussion item for upcoming meeting for how we want to move forward with.
Hundred percent. If it's not going to increase the value and doesn't fall under the criteria, don't bring it to us. Hi, Ron.
I'm all good with that.
I didn't see, I didn't know, I didn't hear.
No, no, I'm listening, taking it in.
Yeah.
So I think it's on table for 25,000 and I think everybody seems to be in agreement with that. And then with upcoming meetings, if we have a discussion item as far as moving forward.
Councilmember Koenig.
Aye.
Councilmember Collier.
Aye.
Councilmember Sertovich.
No.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
Aye.
Item D, resolution authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreement between the city of Kiwanee and the Kiwanee Park District.
And there, there is no actual resolution at this time. It was, it's on there as a topic for you to be able to discuss and give direction to us of what you're willing to agree to, because there were some questions.
This is not a resolution, this is a discussion item. We'll have a discussion, and we have several members of the Park Board here and our director of the parks.
So this is the way this is written out. This is three years of free water, and then after that, build at 20% of the normal billing rate. There's no limits or anything on water or caps.
Just blanket.
Andrew Dwyer, Kiwanee Park District. What our plan is to do is open up the splash pad in May and run through September, running it about eight to 10 hours a day. At the general capacity, we expect it to be around 70% of full-time usage, which equates to about $22,000 a year as it currently stands. So that is the expectation. Obviously, we're not going to be running it middle of the night, early in the morning throughout the winter schedule, but that's what the plan would be.
22,000 on the rates that we have to adjust for the rates that we just approved, too.
Correct. This is a multifaceted intergovernmental agreement. I think Mark must have turned it off.
Yeah, yeah, a little excited.
All the junk getting around here.
Hold me out, man.
Mark doesn't need a microphone.
So it's a multifaceted agreement. We're tackling multiple problems across the board here. We have a dredging issue out of the Mont Park that full remediation is going to cost us well over $100,000. 130 is what's quoted from Rapid Brothers. That's not including the damage that's going to be done to the lagoon, the concrete, the grounds, then disposal. Further, we're looking at options to address the dumping of that silt through the storm sewer runoff that is currently in three neighborhoods through the city. We're looking at remediating for the future to get ahead of it, so it actually doesn't dump into the lagoon, and then be able to put it on the schedule for pumping similar to what you would do with the septic system. So we're looking at not only solving the problem that we're about $130,000 that we have already been in place currently with the city, that that's going to cost. We're looking at saving you money on the backend as well. And your cost at cost is obviously less than the cost that you put on to the customers, your break-even cost, as evidenced in that presentation by Scott earlier.
Can I ask you a question, Andy? You're talking about the agreement on the remediation of the silt from the, and we have an agreement in place for what, 2,000?
$2,000 a year.
A year? Now is that 2,000, because that's what we're willing, we've done the math and figured that $2,000 worth of stormwater drainage and the lagoon is what's creating that. When we talk about $130,000 on the city's behalf, is that really the city's 130,000 or is it 2,000 compounded over X amount of years that it hasn't been done? So it's not equivalent to $130,000 that the city owes the Park District for the remediation of the silt in there?
So $2,000 is a number that someone came up with.
Right.
It's not, it's not relative to the cost of the removal. As it stands, the last time the lagoon was dredged was a partial dredging of 30 to 40% for roughly 30, $40,000. And that was done in 2009, $2,000 a year, $32,000 a year up to today. And of course, remediating that to that point is, we're not able to, we're not ever going to be able to solve the problem that is being created. With this agreement, we believe that we're going to be able to get a full remediation of the lagoon within three to five years. Our plan is to do it upfront. As to your discussion earlier about water rates and infrastructure, I and the Park District fully agree, doing things in today's dollars can get you 10 compared to nine next year, eight the year after. So that's what our plan is, is to try to get it and tackle it as soon as possible to solve it before the cost continues to grow.
Right. And the reason I ask that is because somebody somewhere agreed to $2,000. Whether it was, hey, we'll give you this money, just like we have an intergovernmental agreement to, what is it, a dollar for Liberty Park? That we, over 100 years or whatever, so somebody agreed to a dollar that we're going to exchange hands. So the $2,000 is what we agreed to help pay for that, not looking at it, well, inflation and everything else has gone up, so 2,000 in 2009 is 32,000 today. So I just want to make sure that we're on the same page here, because we have the agreement that says do.
$2,000 in 2009 probably would have got you, let's say, 150 cubic.
It doesn't mean that we're responsible for dredging the whole lake, though. That's, that's what I want to get at. That $2,000 is the money that we agreed to say, here, we'll give you $2,000 a year, whatever you do with that to dredge it, and whatever you want to come up with the rest of it, that's on you guys, but we're willing to make that agreement for $2,000. That's what the agreement states, right?
You can produce agreement, because none of us have been able to find.
That's what I'm being told, that we have an agreement for $2,000. Nobody can come up with that, is that right? So we don't even really have an agreement, because nobody has it.
Right. So looking at options, you know, there are options of the city storms who are dumping into the lagoon, and I'm not looking for an adversary relationship.
Not at all.
Looking for a partnership to solve the problems on the city's side of cutting us a check for $30,000 or realizing and also providing a benefit to the residents. I mean, it's, for you, myself, someone with kids, that the city working with us on this provides a better opportunity for my kids and for your kids to go spend time at the splash pad longer throughout the year. It also helps us resolve the problem of the lagoon issue that we're having, where we put fish in every year for fishing rodeo that holding roofing supports us in. And as the temperatures rise in June, we're having O2 rates that are well below sustain, sustainment of life, in addition to going out at 8:00 AM and having a surface temperature of the lake at 87 degrees. It's continually, it's going to continue to grow, and the issue's never been resolved. And I understand that the $2,000 is something that was agreed to a long time ago. Obviously, I can't correct the problems of the past, neither can Gary or Gary, but what we can do is try to work together for the future advancement of the.
Hundred percent. I just want, and the reason I bring that up, because I want to compartmentalize the two, the lagoon and the silt, completely different than what you're asking here. So let's remove that from the conversation, okay? I think the splash pad's a great benefit, and I'm willing to hear that, but I don't like bringing that in and then saying, well, the city's creating this problem, and instead of you writing a check for $30,000, let's work in an intergovernmental agreement. I'm all for this. I just want to get the lagoon out of it, because it has nothing to do with the water rates that we're looking at here and helping out. It's a great benefit to the community, and I think that putting that in.
I think that this does take, he's accepting responsibility for dredging the lagoon, if I read this correct.
I'm accepting responsibility that has been a problem that I've approached the city about for over two years.
Right. But he's accepting responsibility, but we're talking about an agreement that doesn't exist. I know many, so the.
I know, he's clarifying.
I know.
And like, I applaud a living document where, you know, two of the most impactful portions of your property tax bill, these government bodies are cooperating. And this is the beginning of something that can evolve. And I'm really thankful for the work that you're doing here to bring it to us. So, I mean, I think, I think your, I think your intent is being potentially realized here, which is to like settle the silt issue. I mean, it is our runoff, it's our streets running off into there. It's a common peril. So I, like, what do you think?
I, I'm just looking at it from a standpoint, and we're talking on that, like, let's talk about the water and the impact of that this is going to do for the city. My, we, I've been begging you for a splash pad, I've been begging everyone. I want this in our community. A lot of parents do, a lot of kids do. And I think it's in, as a council, we should be working together with you guys to do this and make this happen, to have this amenity in our community, because it's only going to further, more people coming to this community and utilizing this thing. So I think it's a great thing that you guys are doing. I applaud you guys for the work you guys are doing on it.
And I would say that our partnerships and our discussions, I have conversations with Gary at length, and there historically and previously, there have been discussions about us assuming through an agreement, maybe the maintenance and the mowing of certain parks throughout the town. Our equipment's much bigger, we're more effective at. Our equipment's much bigger. We're, we're more effective at taking care of those things. And, and those collaborations, uh, we've, we're more than willing to have those discussions.
Yes.
Just as Scott from CMT talked about earlier, we're about two blocks away, uh, with a well that we've had that, that we're offering up in this agreement as well.
I think it's great, yeah.
If you find the viability of it, let's work together to save the taxpayers' money.
Hundred percent.
How, how you go about doing that? If it, if it's just enough well to sup, supplement the fluoride disposal, if it's something that you pump in to supplement your, your pot of water, we're, I pay taxes, you guys pay taxes. Our, our board, your board, we're all aligned to do what is best for the community. And that's really, that's why we're here today. We're looking at the options to, to resolve an issue on, on the dredging issue that has been there for quite a while. That we'd rather just, we understand the, the situation. You guys had a lot to deal with. We, we have five parks. We're, we're willing to take these things on, uh, and obviously the consideration for the splash pad is a huge one for us because it's, it's something new for the community and we've put in all this time and effort. And that, that's a feather in the cap for the city if they should choose to, to partner with us on it because in effect, you're offering additional hours for the kids to be out there to play throughout the summers. And that's, and that's not just the park district, that's the city and that's, that's all of the residents putting forth and supporting, you know, our initiatives and our projects.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't disagree with what you said. Um, but then later on, we have, um, if we elect to use that well, then, um, any and all services provided to the park district, including water, sewer, trash, or other services which are normally charged us for, um, we want to cease billing on that as well.
We're open to.
It's negotiable.
Yeah, we, it's, that was just what was placed in there.
I'm just reading it as written.
That was, that was absolutely placed in there. We, we fully understand that, uh, it is a negotiation and what you feel is a reasonable amount for that. Obviously, um, you know, the viability of a well that, uh, may require us to do, uh, some, some licensing and permits on our end since it is on our property. We were aware that there's probably going to be some expense and, uh, some other requirements on our end as well, uh, should that happen. So that, that's why we put that in there. Obviously, that's a negotiation that we could, uh, reserve for a later time to address that should we get to the point of once they're able to get in there and do their assessments.
Andy, I had that in my notes too. Like, if we can maybe just scratch that from this one and not because we're not
Willing to work with you.
amenable to talk about it, but primarily because we haven't assessed the cost of the well. And so we, like, the trade-off analysis is not able to be discussed.
We, we, we drafted this. We actually thought we would have some traction on it at that time. So, absolutely.
I, I received a message from a city that had some concerns about the transparency, that if we did, you know, provide the free water, that they would like to see that that's exactly what it's going to. So we'd have to find a way to make sure that the public was aware of what was being, you know, given up by the city, you know? And then, um, I know I spoke to several members of the park board, you know, the possibility of, uh, bringing Francis Park into this fold. They, you know, Park District, they're in the profession of, of providing safe and appealing parks. See, we're, we're not in the business of parks, you know? And there's been some major improvements out of Francis Park already. Uh, we've got the, uh, Friends of Francis Park that are working, you know, for renovations on the Fred Francis home. So, you know, we, we actually talked to the park board several years ago, quite a few years ago now, when I first, you know, was elected mayor, we talked to them about possibly taking over Francis Park. And there was just way too much at that point that needed to be done. A lot of those improvements through, uh, the grant that we got are being taken care of. So I, I think it'll make it a little bit more appealing to maybe enter a discussion with them and, you know, some of the trade-offs for, for the water, maybe having them look at, uh, running Francis Park.
Do I, can I, I don't know the agreement because that was gifted or whatever to the city.
Francis Park?
Yeah.
That was actually, it was left in the will to the city of Kiwanee by Fred Francis, with the caveat that if we give up ownership of that park, of Macley Gold City, University of Illinois.
So would that be us giving up ownership to the park district or?
Well, we wouldn't have to give up ownership of.
So we still own it, they maintain it? Is that what we're looking to do?
We could write it up that way, yes.
I just want to make sure that we don't.
Yeah, violate that, that trust, you know? So I, I understand that. But like I say, it's just, you know, something for us to, to open up discussions with. Like I say, I, I, you know, spoke about it in the second meeting and, uh, that was one of the things that were brought up and, you know, of course, you know, they couldn't say, oh yeah, we would do that. But they would definitely be open for discussions on, on possibly doing that. So I think there's, there's a lot to discuss here, you know? I, I think, you know, we need to schedule meetings. I, I suggested, uh, similar to what we do for work section, work sessions for, uh, uh, our budget, you know? Maybe have a, a joint meeting that was open to the public between the park board and with the city council. So, you know, make it available to the public so we're not violating, you know, any state laws by, uh, you know, having, you know, too many members here. So. But that is, you know, a suggestion that I made, you know, that we have a meeting and, and bring up these discussion items where their entire board, our entire board can, uh, discuss and come up with ideas and, you know, basically spitball the ideas and, you know, see what sticks.
Andy, have you done a flow analysis to find out how much water, um, if, from the hours, normal usage, nothing egregious? Like what amount of water there would be flowing through the splash pad and what the amount of money that the water rates would be for that?
Yes, I believe I submitted that to Gary, uh, a while back, but it, it points to, uh, the, that I referred to earlier. Uh, we did flow tests.
Two thousand a year, you said?
Yeah, exactly. Uh, we, we did flow tests, uh, to, to ensure that, you know, we had the proper capacity, uh, at the, at the location. And in regards to, you know, Mayor Moore's question about the amount, I, from my understanding, that there was going to be a meter installed on there regardless to, to monitor and control. Obviously, that's for leak protection as well. Uh, and so you would be able to, to track, uh, usage throughout the day. And we would have separate meters between the rest of our facility and also the splash pad itself, uh, separate lines, uh, specifically because we don't want to have a drop when our features are turned on.
Yeah.
Just from, you know, the conversations we've had tonight though, I mean, we're looking at 20-plus percent increase. And then we got three years free and the rest at an 80% discount. I, I think we need to come closer on that. Because that's a, that, I mean, we're raising the water on every resident that pays water in Kiwanee. And in the same evening, we're going to, and granted, I am not anti-splash pad or park district, but we can't give everything away. Because, I mean, it, if I was sitting out there and that happened, I would be the first one to be furious.
I was concerned about that too. Um, and this weekend, I asked Andy about the overlap of our taxing bodies. And they're nearly 100% coincidental. So the same, the same residents, the same taxpayers are going to either pay for it through his budget or through our budget.
Correct.
And so I guess, I mean, I, I don't know. It, it's on the control of the money, I guess? Is that kind of where you're going then maybe?
Well, I think that the, I mean, if it comes, you know, using that analogy of our budget, then that's kind of artificially inflating ours.
For sure.
You know?
But if it comes out of theirs, it's artificial.
It's more of an accountability.
So I mean, if it doesn't matter either way.
Sure.
Then, you know, so. So by, you know, i- in that case, I mean, it really, it really doesn't matter.
It's six or half a dozen. It's either coming from one taxing body or the other.
So we wouldn't really even need to do anything.
Because they're going to pay for it, so it's money of their budget.
Right.
Pay for it's money out of ours. The homeowner's at the, basically the same.
In our sense, alleviating it for that three years allows us to turn that additional capital immediately into the remediation that has been deferred for, for quite some time. That, that's our, that's our goal. Uh, obviously, you know, percentages and, uh, everything else that we discussed, that's a discussion. Uh, initially, Gary and I effectively agreed to most of those. Obviously, uh, that's a discussion that can be back and forth, up and down, left and right from there. Uh, but as it stands right now, our goal is to turn those funds, uh, while we're having a TIF discussion as well. We, we've been holding on to one for something that's in the downtown district, uh, for about a month regarding trying to install silt apples, which is preventing the silt to even make it to the lagoon in the future. And, uh, we're asking for some funding. We're going to be asking for some funding over Chautauqua Park for some public infrastructure, which is in the TIF district. So it was placed in the TIF district by the city. Uh, we, we look at that discussion as, as something that is somewhat separate. However, we believe the full remediation, if we want to do this thing right and, and not get into the lake every so many years in the future, we would love to install something and we could pump it out with the septic system. And that's going to be at a, a pretty extensive cost. Uh, Chris Roginsky with MSI, you're all familiar with, he's recommended some silt apples and those could be between 100 and 200,000 dollars. And, and that's a, a strong consideration on our part. If we have the, the working capital and the availability to, to solve these problems, then we can put that on a schedule and plan for it. We all like to plan for a schedule. If I can come in and pump it, pump it out like a septic three times a year on a contract at a specific cost, sign me up. But if I have to dig into a lagoon every so many years and, and do radar depth testing, silt surveys at four thousand dollars and, and then pull it out, damage concrete, damage, damage the, the surfaces around there, try to find a place to put it, ultimately, that's going to be down the line. It's going to be more costly to the taxpayers. And, and we're trying to avoid those things. We're trying to get in there and do it right from beginning. And that's really why we're asking your partnership on both sides, because we think it's mutually advantageous.
Well, it is a proven fact, and I mentioned this to you earlier, that people will drive a distance to find a job. But people will live where they're entertained and that includes a strong park district.
We're really doing everything we can in the community and your partnerships are, are highly valued. Uh, obviously, we have the splash pad going in currently. We're, we're putting in the city's first park. We're, we're trying to be as progressive as possible. And, uh, you know, we're doing all these things. Last year, we kept our, our tax rate, our EBITDA roughly 9% to 10%. We actually did follow suit with the, the city and we have it under, uh, 5%. So, um, as, as the city's taxpayers can see on our tax code and ours, uh, we're, we're doing everything we can, everything we can to be as responsible as possible. And, and this is just one of those components that help us do so.
Well, I told you before, um, you all do a great job at Berry's Park. It's beautiful. My son, he, every year he went out to Wimahat bass fishing. He loved it so much that he actually ran into the, he was fishing, his line broke. He ran into, into the pond. My wife started screaming, they're bringing shoes on him because he wanted that fish so bad. And we got that trophy for catching the biggest fish. Man, that was, that was the world to him. So I think it seems as if that, the theme for tonight is we have so many past issues of problems and people are not sticking with agreements. But I think we have an opportunity as a board to, um, just envision for the city of Kiwanee and, and move forward. Because, you know, I often say we have to tell a job, we've got to deal with what we didn't do, plus trying to look at 50, 500 years down the road. And one question I like to say, you know, what is Kiwanee going to look, Kiwanee going to look like in 50 years? I think the one way that we're going to succeed in the city is come together as one and come into, to agreement. I think that's what we're going to fight it because it's tough. Economy's crazy, inflation's going up. So I am, you know, in agreement with it because I said, my, it impacted my, my son and kids love them at Park, there's lots of them out there. So I think it's a good idea, um, with this agreement.
Any questions for Andrew Roy? Let him sit down.
I, I appreciate everything and I, I align with all of you. I've had conversations with Chris, Adam, Tyrone, Gary and like, and, and our goal is to leave it better than we found it.
Hundred percent.
Doing that. And, uh, this is just another step to kind of start not only crawl and walk it, but running towards something.
I do have one question. When is the, um, splash pad due to be completed?
We're, we're looking at starting on concrete next week and we are, are very hopeful to do a grand opening, uh, one of the first two weeks of June. And then, uh, coincidentally, the, the dog park is going to be roughly on the same timeframe. So we're, we're nearing completion here in very near future.
So, so the, and part of the reason I ask that, Mayor, is maybe, maybe we need to take some action as a council sooner rather than later in good faith about the water bills for this year at least. Um, I, I, I do personally, uh, feel in favor of continuing the discussion and moving our city parks, if possible, to the management of the park district. Um, so we can reduce overlap of government services. Um, I do acknowledge your concern as well. Maybe not going out further, but should we agree in good faith one year or so on the water plan so the park district can move forward with other projects that they have?
We, we could, you know, come up with a one-year agreement for the time being because we kind of run ourselves into a short period of time with the, the quick openings they're having. And then over the next year, have subsequent discussions as far as, uh, expanding that agreement.
I would say that doesn't offer us, well, I appreciate that. It, it doesn't offer us a lot of security with the amount that we're going to have to contract to put out, uh, some dredging and some resolving of those issues. While we do have time, obviously, at your next city council meeting.
I was going to say.
Or we could, or we could retro. Uh, there, there are plenty of options, but, uh, obviously, one of our considerations is also that we don't want to incrementally go in and, and do gin's work on getting to the lagoon here, getting to the lagoon there. It's going to be more costly to us and the taxpayers.
I would like to see us do it right. Get the agreement put in place exactly how it's, should be written. So we don't have this, well, there's an agreement out there, but we can't find it kind of thing. And, and we did it one year and it, I, I would like, and we have a council meeting, one more.
I, I was just, because I mean, now that gin.
I appreciate.
And I, so I'm, I'm okay.
Yeah, we, we, we have one more in May and then he's not open until June. So I think we're, I think we're still.
We have time?
Yeah, we have time.
We can massage it a little bit more.
Yeah.
We could also, I mean, work out agreements and have them forwarded to us through email so that we can review them and offer opinions back. If we want to try and get that for, you know, next council meeting.
Hundred percent.
Absolutely.
That's something you can do, Gary and Casey.
So we got to send our votes and then table this for the next council meeting.
It's just discussion at this point.
It was set up as an ordinance, but it, it's actually a discussion item.
We made it a discussion.
All right. Thank you, Andy. We'll move on to, uh, item F, bill number two, five dash four, five ordinance for amendment section 113 dash zero, point zero five, sale of deuterius drugs prohibited of the city of Kiwanee Code of Ordinance. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Discussion.
This is the one we talked about last week, so.
Yeah, and I, I read through it again and didn't see, it surprised me that changed from our discussion.
I don't, Mayor, I don't have any questions about the, uh, about the ordinance. But in doing my research for it, to learn about it, I just wanted to ask, have we as a council and as a city addressed the other portions of the Cannabis Regulation Act? As far as, uh, any zoning questions about where we do and do not want to have these businesses as well as, uh, local revenue and the ability to apply, uh, sales tax to this product? Have we done that or do we need to address that?
Yes, that was all done, uh, several years ago when it was.
And it was amended.
Perfect. So what is, what is our sales tax? What do we?
It's the maximum that was allowed. I think it's 3%.
Okay. All right, awesome. Thanks.
Still doing fine.
Yeah, me too. Still over glowing and shining. Um, actually, I was here, uh, I was watching last time, but I, I just had a question in regards, first off, everything, I mean, it's, it all makes perfect sense. Everything you guys talked about for me. One thing I was wondering and, um, also some people that I had conversations with was, is there any opportunity for the city to profit from it as opposed to banning it? So where you have, you kind of have a lot of people that look around the city and they see a lot of opportunity for vice, I guess, and they see.
see a lot of opportunity for vice, I guess, and they see the city profiting off of that. Whether the extent to that profit, you know, whatever, I don't know. So I think the question was, is there an avenue, is there a way where the city can maybe create a license, a specific license for those businesses that are, that are selling those like Farm Bill hemp cannabis products? Because I think that's what's at the issue here, like the Delta 8 vapes and stuff.
I think there were some health concerns along with those as well.
Well, I mean, yeah. Same, same like with alcohol and gambling and tobacco. So I think that's what a lot of people are kind of getting at there. And I don't think anybody is necessarily, from when I talk to people, I don't think people are going, why are they doing this? And I think we all understand why. I think the question more that people kind of ask is like, well, okay, if, 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 you know, there's going to be a regular state licensed cannabis dispensary coming into town, then is there a way, or can there be a way created where the city can actually profit off of the retailers that are selling the federally legal hemp products?
We could probably, we could probably issue some type of a business license that would include that, but I would not think that it would generate enough revenue that would have a huge impact that I don't...
The difference, and I get what you're saying, Obrey, but when you look at these, when we talk about state license...
Sure.
So we talk about gambling, state license, alcohol, state license, tobacco, state license, cannabis, state license. These all have that main thing right there in common. We don't just have somebody without a state license peddling alcohol on the side of the road because they can do it. And that's what we're trying to prevent in our community.
One thing...
And we're not going to benefit off it. People already complain about too many vape shops and too many gambling parlors that we have here.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And, but they're state licensed, and the gambling parlors and stuff. So that's the difference. We don't want just anybody popping up and selling these items here unless they have a state license.
I think it's one thing that one of the owners of one of the businesses, like, the more people find out I work in Menards, they like pop in, I probably shouldn't have even said that, because they pop in on me and they start, you know, they start talking to me about things. And a lot of them, I'm like, hey, it's not, I mean, I'm not the one. But one thing that the person brought up was that they are state licensed, that they paid for their license, they have their license to operate their business.
State licensed dispensary.
Well, I mean, that's, I think that's the kind of the thing with the gray area, and you guys all discussed that, and I think everybody kind of knows that, that between the 2018 Farm Bill that the federal government passed that kind of allows, that created the gray area that now states and municipalities are dealing with this kind of a thing, I think what people are kind of wondering and leaning towards is, you know, is there maybe a proactive way to approach it, to actually benefit from it and maybe profit from it? If you can create a business license for these entities, are you able to, if you can create a specialized business license, can you inflate the amount of that business license to kind of, A, make it worth your while as a city to allow those businesses to operate, you know, and then also entice them to want to pay? Because some of these places are making, they're probably making a decent amount of money.
Obrey, this is the first step.
Sure, sure, sure.
This, this controls it, and you control how it comes in.
Sure.
If you let it come in before you control it, which is the problem with most of these new forms of revenue.
Yeah, yeah.
We have let them come in before we've controlled them. Getting, you know, your arms around it is much more difficult.
I think, I think that's exactly right, that some people are just wondering if the move to ban the things is necessary. Well, just from the discussion last night, I think amending it was to, was to regulate the sale, was to basically prevent the sale, right?
It's to control the sale.
To control the sale.
You got to be a state licensed dispensary operating courts with Illinois Cannabis Act. Like, we get rid of the gray area.
Sure.
There's no more gray area. You said the government has created this gray area, we're letting in that. Now, it plays within the bounds of what we have decided here, and then we can, we can expand from that. But just like Adam said, we're controlling it and getting rid of that gray area that he supposedly, that he talked about that is created by the government, because now that's gone.
Right.
It's either you can or you can't. You have the license.
There's no illegality, right, for that at the federal or state level? I think that's what some of the business owners are kind of taking issue with, is that there's no illegality about it. That it's more of a community reaction than necessarily a legal issue, where, where some of these smoke shop owners are licensed business owners.
Hundred percent.
And what they are selling, the product that they're selling to people is legal. And then now, there's talk of basically...
Banning it, unless you have the...
Banning it or creating a situation within city limits where you have, where you have it made essentially illegal via fines. So if you're going to make it kind of, if it can be made and pushed into that, like, arena where it's kind of illegal under penalty of fine, and honestly, you're going to have people doing it anyway because they're making enough money to where they're going to pay your $500 fine, they're not really, it's not, it's not really a good deterrent. Why not create a specialized license for them, charge them an excess amount of money to operate, profit, and then you're also able to regulate them, right?
We have to get this in place first before we start...
Sure, sure. I don't want to take it too much of your time. I know there's a timeline and everyone started, but that was just a question that people were asking, like, if, if the city was considering that aspect of it, but...
I know Chief did a lot of work.
No, I mean, he makes a good point. That's a great idea. I don't know how that would shake out in the future, or if at all. Just to touch on some things, Illinois did close those loopholes that the federal hemp laws interacted, they closed those in '23. I don't know those specifically, but I can find those out. What we're doing complements those laws, though. Another issue he brought up is the enforcement. It is a fine, but we also do have the power to revoke their tobacco license, which all vape shops will have a tobacco license, where all their, all their income comes from. So if they are violating those statutes, there is some teeth to it. Other than just paying the $500 fine, we can shut them down, basically. So there is a little bit more of a penalty there than just money. The big thing is, it kind of reminds me, and I just thought of this when we're listening, is in 2008, 2009, we had a huge K2 problem in town, and these packages looked like they were store-bought. And the stuff we just purchased from a place in town that tested 75% THC looks like it's store-bought. Do we know what it is? No, these could be made on the black market, shipped there, we have no way to track it. What does is the dispensaries. They're monitored, they have to have the purity, what it is, they have, they have all control. It controls that market for us, so there's not a product being sold, especially to youth, because that's where our complaints come from, is the school districts, or a lot of them, getting their hands on these kind of things. And is what they're getting, or what they're using, is that what it says on the package? Is that actually what's in there? And we have found through our investigations, that's not. They're selling 75% cannabis, that's a lot of, or 75% THC. That's a pretty good amount, especially for a juvenile. So that's the biggest concern. I don't think that's a terrible idea, maybe. I'd have to look into more of you guys in the future, but I think this is a good first step.
I think this is a great first step.
Chief, wouldn't, under, under federal and state law, wouldn't an unlicensed, wouldn't that be illegal?
Yeah, it's 100% illegal.
Like, that's 100%?
Yeah, and that's the problem we run into, is that we, with the gray area and the laws, I kind of explained in the last discussion...
Yeah, yeah.
Are having issues with that gray area and with the testing methods to be able to regulate that. The laws are great, they're on the books, but we have to be able to approve them, and we're not able to at this point.
Because it looks like...
With the current case law and stuff like that.
Gotcha.
So we're just kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place until the state comes in, which they most likely will, or are going to look at it at least, and this ordinance will get us by until then.
Okay. I think that's a great starting point.
Any other points, questions, suggestions? Please call a roll.
Councilmember Sernovich?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic?
Aye.
Councilmember Culver?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Moving on, bill number 25-46, resolution authorizing expenditure of taxing and financing revenues for the improvement of public infrastructure adjacent to Gusterson Ford. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
End discussion. Do you have a representative from Gusterson Ford here if you have any questions for...
Kurt, it's been a long meeting already. Let's get...
And just, just to summarize for each of you, this is, Gusterson Ford is having some work done. They're expanding into the old Durable building. They're putting, you know, a door on the side where people can drive in and use it for, that'll be their new shop, and where you get some, some work done on your car or truck. And this is us kind of piggybacking off of what they already have going on and replacing infrastructure, our infrastructure that belongs to us, adjacent to it. While they've got a contractor that's already there, it saves on mobilization costs and it just cuts down our costs. What you have in the resolution is the cost of replacing the curb, but while they were there, they talked to us about replacing the alleyway, the approach into the alley, which is in pretty bad shape as well. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. And I'd answer any questions you would have, and I think Kurt would as well.
I don't have any objections to the, to the project. I do, the estimate for additional work will be provided on May 12th, so we're kind of approving a question mark number. Is there any, is it going to prevent any work being done if we wait to get the final number? No, we got, we got the estimate, that was in today, and that number is $10,985.
For a total of the...
That's in addition to the...
Twenty-four thousand.
Twenty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-five, so...
So we're talking about $35,000. And you also talked about some opportunities for correcting other infrastructure issues in the vicinity.
We do have an opportunity to replace a very aged hydrant that is at the end of a dead end. It's a water main extension that essentially only served Durable, and by actually cutting off that extension where it crosses Lexington, we'd be able to put a new hydrant on the northwest corner of Lexington and First Street that would then give perhaps better fire protection to the visitation YMCA and Gusterson Ford. And then, rather than having an entire main that crosses the street and serves Durable, they could internally plum from there, from, from one building into the other to correct the, the lack of water once we take a main out.
Is the scope where we can run a true service line... Is the scope where we can run a true service line that it might be worth doing the road?
There, that is a consideration, and we have, there's, so once we get rid of that piece of the main, there's no more main under that. We still have to look at the sewer, and I'm meeting with Hutchinson Engineering next week on the 20th, so that will be one thing that we can talk about as potentially improving the option of getting that road fixed sooner rather than later. You may recall that in front of the Y, or beside Durable, there was at one time a pretty severe dip that we've corrected, but we can fix the rest of the road too, perhaps. I don't want to say yes, but water would be one thing that we could take out of the equation on that, that block.
Adam, those two roads are pretty deteriorated.
For sure.
They've been bad 25 years ago.
Yeah.
They haven't been touched, but...
Right. Which is kind of like where I'm trying to go, is like, if we're going to dig in, is it right to do it all correctly and have it be one of the first investments in our downtown in front of a major employer who's investing in our town? I mean, this is what TIF is for. So, like, discussing that could be interesting.
Yeah, I think they could install the, this work, and it would not take away from the ability to mill out that road and replace it.
Okay. It wouldn't eliminate that option.
So we're not going to be working over ourselves in the future, undoing what we just did.
All right, thanks. Yeah, just hold your vote. So, how much money are we willing to give?
This is public. This really isn't even, I mean, are you, is Gusterson Ford paying for this work?
They would go separately.
They're going to bill us. I mean, it's work that you...
We're kind of coordinating.
I'm participating too.
He has, he has them doing work for him, but this is us piggybacking off of the fact that they're there.
Okay.
Right, right.
I mean, so this is a great partnership.
Good. So please call a roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic?
Aye.
Councilmember Culver?
Aye.
Councilmember Sernovich?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Thank you. Absolutely. Glad we could help. And now I...
Sorry, you weren't first.
Now I have several proclamations that I am going to read. First off is a proclamation honoring Kiwanee High School Band and Choir for their second consecutive state championship. Whereas, Kiwanee High School Band and Choir have demonstrated exceptional talent, dedication, and teamwork in their pursuit of musical excellence, and whereas, their hard work culminated in the achievement of the 2025 IHSA Sweepstakes State Championship for Class A, marking their second consecutive title. And whereas, this accomplishment reflects the outstanding leadership of Directors Alex Bennet, Brittany Cron, and Katie Bartok, whose guidance has been instrumental in the student's success. And whereas, the students' performances have brought pride and recognition to Kiwanee High School and the surrounding community. And whereas, Kiwanee High School Band and Choir have set a high standard for future generations of musicians. Therefore, I, Gary Moore, Mayor of the City of Kiwanee, Illinois, do hereby present this proclamation to Kiwanee High School Band and Choir in honor of their remarkable achievement and to celebrate their contributions to the cultural fabric of our community. Let us all join in congratulating Kiwanee High School Band and Choir for their dedication, passion, and outstanding performance. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Kiwanee, Illinois, to be fixed to this on the 8th day of May 2025. And next we have proclamation for FFA member Kaylee Gale. City of Kiwanee proudly recognizes the outstanding achievements of its youth and the positive impact they have on the community's future. And Kaylee Gale, a dedicated and talented student at Kiwanee High School, has demonstrated exceptional commitment, innovation, and leadership in the field of food services entrepreneurship as part of her supervised agricultural experience through the FFA program. And whereas, through hard work, perseverance, and entrepreneurial spirit, Kaylee Gale has earned the prestigious title of 2025 Illinois FFA State Champion in the category of Food Services Entrepreneurship, SAE. And whereas, this distinguished honor reflects not only her personal excellence, but also the strength of Kiwanee High School's agricultural education program, the guidance of our educators and mentors, and the support of her family and community. And whereas, Kaylee Gale serves as an inspiring role model for other students and young entrepreneurs, showcasing the power of agriculture education and the importance of innovation in local and statewide food services. Now therefore, I, Gary Moore, Mayor of Kiwanee, Illinois, do hereby present this proclamation to Kaylee Gale and Kiwanee High School in honor of her remarkable achievement and to celebrate her contribution to the cultural fabric of our community. Urge all residents to join in recognizing her exceptional accomplishments and to support the continued growth of agricultural education and student leadership throughout our community. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Kiwanee, Illinois, to be fixed to this on the 8th day of May 2025. A third proclamation is in honor of the recipient of the 2025 Golden Apple Award. Whereas, the City of Kiwanee proudly celebrates the outstanding individuals whose dedication and excellence uplift our community and inspire future generations. And whereas, Kinder Callahan, an esteemed agricultural teacher and FFA advisor at Kiwanee High School, has been named a recipient of the prestigious 2025 Golden Apple Award for Excellence in Teaching. And whereas, this recognition honors her exceptional commitment to student learning, innovative and inclusive teaching practices, and her passionate leadership within the agricultural education field. Whereas, Mrs. Whereas, Mrs. Callahan's work extends beyond the classroom as she guides and empowers students through the FFA programs, helping to shape the next generation of leaders in the agricultural and beyond. And whereas, hereas, her achievement reflects the highest standards of educational excellence and brings great pride to Kiwanee High School and the entire Kiwanee community. Now therefore, I, Gary Moore, Mayor of Kiwanee, Illinois, do hereby present this proclamation to Mrs. Kendrick Callahan in honor of her outstanding contributions to education and the future of our youth. A witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Kiwanee, Illinois to be fixed on this 13th day of May 2025. And our fourth proclamation is in honor of National Public Works Week. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the City of Kiwanee. And whereas, these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting the nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our residents. And whereas, it is in public interest for the residents, civil leaders and children in the City of Kiwanee to gain knowledge and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association Vietnam. Resolve, I, Gary Moore, Mayor of Kiwanee, do hereby designate the week of May 18th through May 24, 2025, as National Public Works Week. I urge all residents to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in paying tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers and employees and to recognize the substantial contributions they make protecting our national health, safety and advancing quality of life for all. A witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city to be affixed this 13th day of May 2025. And with that, we will move right on to, uh, council communications. Councilman Coliver, your turn to go first.
Been a long night, I think, uh, I don't have much to say tonight, so I'll leave it at that. Congrats to, uh, the band and everybody that we had the proclamation of tonight. That's it.
Councilmember Sernovich?
Uh, just LRS renewal, is that coming up, Gary?
Um, I, I don't think that's coming up anytime soon.
We start in the summer? The annual?
September.
Is it September?
It is.
So are we, uh, proactively gonna meet with them, um, to talk about, uh, quality or anything else like that? Any updates on that?
We will.
Okay. I'd like to just kinda get ahead of those things, yeah.
I think our contract was three years.
I think it's a three-year contract.
Wait, three, three-year price agreement, right? So annually, we should be meeting together?
We, we meet regularly.
Councilmember Baker?
Congratulations to high school. Um, yeah, just those, uh, proclamations there. That's pretty big. Kiwanee High School Band and Choir and FFA are all top-notch organizations, so support them any chance you get. And then the only other thing I was gonna add is, um, I attended the Cinco de Mayo Festival that we held. Um, it was the first ever and that was a, a great event. And then went past a little bit later, cause I was there fairly early after soccer. And, um, it was packed. So it's good to see they had a great turnout. Hopefully we can, uh, continue that. That's it.
I only have a couple of things, uh, just to let everybody know, uh, it's National Police Week. It started on May 11th and runs through May 17th. And we are also in the midst of National Skilled Nursing Week, which began May 10th and runs through May 17th. So if, uh, you, city police officers, you'll recognize them and their week. And, uh, if you are familiar with anybody that works in the skilled nursing field, uh, please congratulate them as well.
I like the National Police Week for the traffic enforcement. You don't wanna do that after. Good call.
I believe we do have some city announcements.
City Hall and the transfer station will be closed Monday, May 26th for Memorial Day. There will not be landscape, garbage or recycling, recycling collection that day as well. Everyone's collection, including landscape, will be postponed by one day. So Monday's pickup will be Tuesday, Tuesdays will be Wednesday and so on. The citywide cleanup is coming up Saturday, June 7th from 7:00 AM to noon at the old hospital site. Residents should bring photo ID and a utility bill when they come through.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
Second? Call a roll.
Councilmember Cal, Comnic?
Aye.
Councilmember Coliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Sernovich?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.